Oh, we're good to go, Dave. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning and welcome to everybody. We will call to order this regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, September 24 of 2024. We appreciate you all joining us this morning. Couple of housekeeping items. The meeting is being livestreamed and also recorded. And I'll ask if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent or vibrate. We would appreciate that courtesy. We're very honored today to have former County Commissioner Brian Buick with us. Brian, welcome.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to see you. And we begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd ask you remain standing for a moment of silence. I would ask if you'd keep in your thoughts, our former county comptroller Bob Foote, who served for many years as county comptroller, lost his wife a few days ago. So please keep Bob and his family in your thoughts. Chris, could you lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you all. Ryan, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Samana?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. We have a quorum. And does everybody have a copy of the agenda? I'll note that under procedures, I'll point out that we have two opportunities for public comment, one in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn the meeting. You're welcome. If you have a comment, you're welcome to speak both of those times. If you prefer and only want to talk one of the two times, that's fine. Or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters. And if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, out of respect for everybody's schedules, we would appreciate that courtesy. Item two is row officer reports and comments. We always set aside time for any of our row officers who might wish to discuss anything, but I suspect they're all in their respective offices, hard at work. So none of them are here today. And they're not required to be here, by the way. So that takes us to public comment. And at this time, I'll open it up and see if anybody has any comments or questions. We would have. Having none. Once again, we'll do this before we adjourn as well. Under fiscal and contractual, most weeks, we get reports from the county comptroller's office that are known as check reconciliation registers or warrant registers. There are listing of all of the checks that have been cut through the comptroller's office. And the documents we have today are dated September 13, September 17, September 19. I'll give my two colleagues some time to look them over. If anybody wishes to see these documents or any of the other material that we're referring to today, at the end of the meeting, we'll be happy to share them with you. So gentlemen, take whatever time you need. Whenever you're ready, I could entertain a motion to have us accept these reports. I vote to accept the reports. Thank you, Mr. Samana. Is there a second option? Mr. Kennedy, we thank you as well. Gentlemen, any questions or concerns about the warrant registers? If not, we'll take a roll call on the motion to accept.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Ryan. We also have the minutes of our most recent meeting, which was held on September 17. Gentlemen, please review them. And whenever you have done so, if you'd like to make a motion, we can adopt the minutes.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? If not, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under written communications, we've received a couple over the course of last week. The first is sent to us by Mr. John Zabrowski, who resides at 1370 New Bedford Sharon Road in Pulaski Township. Purpose of his correspondence is to inform the county of his intent to submit an NPDES permit application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. This is a reissuance. And the description of the project is that the permit allows the discharge of treated sewage to surface waters for the Commonwealth and/or construction of the facility. The proposed activities will take place in Pulaski Township, Lawrence County. Law stipulates that-- Let's hear it. The law stipulates that when this sort of activity occurs, that the county is to be notified. We do not have any regulatory authority over these types of activities, but we are by law required to be made aware of them. The second document comes from the Hillcrest Group, environmental consultants based in Wexford. This references Three Rivers Aggregates, the McCandless plant located on Reese Road in Plain Grove Township. The letter states that Three Rivers Aggregates will be submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection an air quality state-only operating permit renewal application. The renewal application is due at least six months prior to the current expiration date of February 30. That can't be right, on February 31. There is no such thing. So there's a minor error in there. Even if we were leap year, that wouldn't work. It's so I'm sure that DEP will consult with them on the correct date. Since the last permit application, there have been no changes made to the facility. The plant consists of a sand and gravel operation that utilizes conveyors, screens, crushers, and stackers. And once again, this facility is located in Plain Grove Township. The final document, we did discuss it briefly at last week's meeting, but today we can enter it in as part of the official record. It comes to us from the Department of the Army. This particular location is in Lakehurst, New Jersey. Subject is an intergovernmental and inter-agency environmental planning consultation for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, environmental assessment for an area maintenance support activity slash vehicle maintenance shop facility and training center. It states here in Newcastle, PA, that they go on to point out specifically that the location is in North Beaver Township. And we did, again, have quite a lengthy discussion about this last week. And it was also, there's been an article in the paper since that time. But just to summarize, Project One of this undertaking would propose the construction of an area maintenance support activity facility, which would be an 11,000-square-yard MEP lot, military equipment parking lot, a VMS, which is a vehicle maintenance shop, and 25 privately-owned vehicle parking stalls. The project also includes connections to Mohawk School Road and Mount Jackson Road, which, by the way, both of those are state-maintained roads, stormwater controls, lighting, electrical work, and other necessary infrastructure improvements. Project Two proposes the construction of the training center. It will include a 40,000-square-foot building and an associated privately-owned vehicle lot, stormwater controls, lighting, electrical work, and other necessary infrastructure improvements. Once again, the location of this facility would be in North Beaver Township, close to the village of Mount Jackson. Those are the correspondence documents that we received. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion to accept them and file them? I vote we accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dan and Chris, any comments? Dan, anything?
No.
No? Thank you, Chris. I think we have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Takes us to reports on part of the commissioners. And Commissioner Samana, you get to go first today.
Well, I think it was actually a very busy week last week. I had the opportunity to represent Lawrence County in Washington, D.C. with the SPC and the Allegheny Conference. We had an opportunity to go to the White House and the White Eisenhower Center. And also an opportunity to meet with members of Congress to promote our issues in Western Pennsylvania. I thought it was very helpful. This is something that happens every year. It's the first year the SPC, which we're members of, myself and Commissioner Kennedy is on the executive board, are part of this. So I thought it went very well. And that's where I was at the end of the last week. I got back on Friday. And then Saturday, there was a very busy time on our community. And just a few spots I actually went to on Saturday, I had an opportunity to go to a ribbon-cutting ceremony out in Shinango Township for Susie's Homeware and Plus. It's actually a neat little shop that opened at the Shinango Plaza out there. And I think that people have a chance to check it out. They got some neat items in there. And she actually had a business up in Hurst County. So she's now located in Lawrence County. So we're happy to see that. There was a lot of people coming in to check out her goods and wares. So we're happy to welcome her to Shinango Township in Lawrence County. Also had an opportunity to stop down at the St. John Maranite Catholic Church at their fourth annual Middle Eastern Food Fest. And once again, really disappointing when it came to some good food. Had an opportunity to do that. Also had an opportunity to stop out at the Esperduty Farm out in North Beaver. Had a chance to look at all the pumpkins. And that's a big annual event. They do that over the course of two weekends. Hope they get some nice weather this weekend. More people will have to see it. They come from all over the state. Then I had a chance to stop down in West Pittsburgh. They have their Herb Connect Community Day and another quiet act of community. And that went very well. And I also had a chance to stop up at Bo Lant. Or had a chance with Commissioner Kennedy at the Bo Lant Fire Department's annual gun raffle and dinner. Another huge crowd out there. They came from all over. So a lot of activity. And I finished the night at the Oktoberfest for the ITR Society out at their raffle in Shinango Township. So Saturday was quite a busy day. And good stuff all over Lawrence County. And we had attendance everywhere. So we want to keep those activities coming. And it's always good to see people from out of the area coming to these events. And most events I went to, they weren't just Lawrence County residents. So that's something we need to keep encouraging. So that's pretty much, that was my activity, Joe.
I don't know. I don't think you're busy enough, Chris. We appreciate your representing us at these various functions. We do know you get well nourished. I hope you-- A lot of good cooks in Lawrence--
Yes, we do, Joe.
Thank you very much, Chris. I guess I'm up next. I will note that last Thursday, I was able to represent the Board of Commissioners at the Newcastle Area Transit Authority grand opening of their new facilities down off of Montgomery Avenue. And it was a very nice event. And former Commissioner Buick was there. And boy, they got a lot done in less than an hour. Usually those things run on forever, but this was concise. And it was good to see the progress that the Transit Authority is making. So that's all I have right now. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy.
Well, Chris, I say thank you for going for the SPC for me. We discussed it early on. And I said I wasn't traveling at least the first three years. So you took on that for me, and I appreciate it. I'm sure you were going. We were at the Bo Lant Fire Department, but it wasn't Bo Lant. It's probably not smart. I knew it to that. The produce auction.
Oh, is that where they--
It actually worked out so much better for me. Good night.
That's right down the road from you.
Yeah, I could have walked home. Too dark, but I-- Yeah, that was about what I did. My wife had taken off for Columbus, so I was home alone all weekend with my son. So he dragged me all over and had me doing stuff.
Did you win a gun?
No.
No? You tried.
I tried, but we didn't do it.
Okay.
I took them out of cash.
Oh, that's good.
When I got it back. They're smart. Give it to you right away, so you just spend it right away.
Well, Dan, thank you so much. Appreciate your update. That takes us to new business items, Roman numeral seven of our agenda. And the first proposed resolution comes to us in court administration. And Ms. DiMuccio is with us this morning. Amy, would you mind coming up so we'll be able to pick you up on the microphone? Brian, what number is this one?
283.
283. And Amy, we always enjoy you taking the time to visit with us. I believe what you're asking us to consider is an appointment for the court-appointed counsel for juvenile cases. But I'll let you fill us in on all the specifics, if you would, please.
Sure. We have an open position for juvenile contract counsel that was created when Attorney Carolyn Kennedy Ryan resigned that position in, I believe it was September 3, 2024. We have secured Attorney Elizabeth Grivitt, who's agreed to assume that contract from September 19 through the end of 2024. And it would be the same terms and conditions as the other juvenile contract counsels. $28,000 per contract year, which is pro-rated to just cover the period of time she's entering into this contract.
Well, thank you for that and recognizing how important these positions are. And the fact that what you're bringing to us would not have an impact on the budget because it's already in the budget. So let me see if Commissioner Samana has any questions. No, very straight quality. Chris, Mr. Kennedy, any questions?
I'm fine.
Well, and obviously, the sooner we can get to this, the sooner Attorney Grivitt can begin.
Yes.
So we'll take a vote. And then I assume we'll probably have to sign the document, which we can do today. Have that to you as quickly as we possibly can. In fact, recognizing the importance of this, do you have the contract with you?
I do.
Would my colleagues have any objection after we take the vote? Just signing it, that way you'll-- Now, you'll have to have a copy made on you.
Yes. Yes, I can do that quickly.
Okay. As long as that's no trouble. Chris and Dan, you okay with-- Yeah. In the interest of your time, I'd like to move this as quickly as we could. But in order for that to happen, I do need a motion for Resolution 283.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further questions or concerns? And thank you, gentlemen, for your willingness to sign this now. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. And Amy, if you'll just give us a couple more seconds, we can get this to you. It has Vanessa's name on here as Deputy Chief Clerk. She's off today. If-- She'll be back. Is she coming in or not?
It depends on what happens.
At the latest, she'll be here tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that is fine.
You've got the vote.
Yes.
You can still proceed. And we can always have her sign this initial even as late as tomorrow, if that's okay with you. What's important is you've got our three signatures. I'm passing that. And Chris? And then if we could give it back to Ryan, and we'll get the ball rolling.
Okay. Thank you all.
Amy, thank you very much. Hope things are well up on the third floor. Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. The next item on our agenda would be Proposed Resolution 284. And this comes from the District Attorney's Office. We have our ladies. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have two representatives from the District Attorney's Office. And we appreciate you both joining us. Emily and Missy, I believe. Chris-- I apologize. Forgive me. Sometimes I can't remember my own name, if that's any consolation. Ladies, you have a proposal for us dealing with a grant through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. Would one of you, or both of you, care to fill us in on the details?
This is the RASA grant. It's for Chrissy's salary through the District Attorney's Office. So this actually comes to us through the crisis shelter. It's passed through to the DA's office, and it's at no cost to the taxpayer. So it's specifically for the services that Chrissy provides to our office, making sure that victims are notified, that we have all of their contact information, just giving them any support that they need, helping them with restitution matters. All of that falls under this grant. And again, it's no cost to the taxpayer.
Thank you, Counselor. Chrissy, anything you'd wish to add about it?
Not really. Emily pretty much covered everything. It's just notifying victims of any criminal, anything in the criminal justice system.
And this, of course, has been ongoing. This is not a new grant we've utilized in the past.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any much younger question. This is a yearly grant.
This is the first year that it's-- Since I've been here, that it's been one year. It's usually two years, but they're just doing up on here.
Anything else, Dan? Mr. Samana?
No.
Well, ladies, we appreciate you bringing us this information. And what I could do then is ask for a motion for us to approve it.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Ladies, we appreciate you joining us. Chrissy, I'm very sorry for my blunder. Forgive me. Good to see you both.
Good to see you too.
Wish you both a good day.
You too.
Bye-bye. Scott Baldwin is with us from Mental Health and Developmental Services. How's Mr. Baldwin today?
Doing well, if you weren't telling me.
Good to hear. Scott has proposed Resolution 285. And I believe what you're asking us to do is make an adjustment in the funding level for vocational and psychological services. But I'll let you give us all the specifics, please.
Yeah, just cleaning up some bills from the last fiscal year. And this one program that we contracted, Vocational Psychological Services, we just can't seem to get that number done. Referrals continue to grow in our respite program. I was already over here once to adjust it. And this is just to catch up from the last fiscal year from '23, '24. So this is for vocational psychological services, adjusting their contract from $265,000 to $275,000. And again, this is for that respite program that supports families when they need to leave their own. We have workers that go in and care for their kids or their adults while they leave the house to do a variety of things, daughters appointments, groceries. It's just additional support that we provide. It's clearly doing well and well-received. It just continues to grow. So this is what that $10,000 goes to cover.
Well, we thank you for giving us the details on that, Scott. Commissioner Samana, any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, may I have a motion for Proposed Resolution 285?
I vote we support Resolution 285. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Scott, is that all you have for us today?
Yeah.
Good to see you, sir. Take care. The next two resolutions fall under Children and Youth Services. And we have Mike Grickel and Lisa Handout with us. Good morning, how are you folks?
Good.
Good to hear. Well, the first one, number 286, would be Corusoft. Who's gonna--
They'll handle this stuff.
So it sounds like Lisa's gonna take care of the first one, at least.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
This would be a renewal contract with Corusoft. They provide our in-home services for electronic monitoring. It gives us an added bonus, or an added tier of supervision in our graduated responses. They also provide not just electronic monitoring services, but they also provide cell phones. And this may be something new that you might be surprised to hear that we actually give cell phones to our youth that are under supervision. But it is an added way for us to be able to remain in contact with them, helping support them, reminding them of appointments, et cetera. Corusoft was very key in when we had during COVID times, where we were able to get cell phones to kids so that we were not having those face-to-face contacts that we had. We were able to keep in contact with them via the cell phones. And so what was nice is, you know, they might not answer the phone, but they will answer a text message. So we appreciate having that level of supervision with youth as well. This contract is continued amounts. And it's the same with continued amount from last year. We did not increase any prices, not any queries, any utilization. But it falls under our new base budget. It's an 80-20 reimbursement, 80% state, 20% county.
Lisa, thank you for that. I may have not have noted, but I should. Lisa, of course, is with the Juvenile Probation Office. And Mike is with the Children and Youth Services Office. Gentlemen, since these both fall under the same realm, Gentlemen, since these both fall under the same realm, can we hear the second one? And then maybe take one motion for both of you both okay with that? Yeah, thank you. And let me see, Dan, do you have questions on this first one? Okay, thank you, Chris?
No.
All right, thank you both. Number 287 is Wesley Family Services in Wilkinsburg, Allegheny County. Mike, I'm assuming this is one you're gonna talk about?
Yes, okay.
Otherwise you probably wouldn't be here today. So it's all yours, Mike.
Okay. This is a foster home and, and we've used them for backup. We haven't used them in the last two or three years. But it's just something that we have in the books in case something comes up, comes up where we can't place them and it foster home close to us and we have other areas, you know, other avenues. But we haven't used them, the rate didn't go up. So the rate's the same. So it's actually the last, from '23 on, the rate's the same.
All righty. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Sonata, do you have any questions for Mr. Gricklow?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
All righty. Well, gentlemen, you've heard the information for both Resolution 286 and 287. Would one of you care to make a motion to approve both of them?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. And if there are no other concerns, we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, it's good to see you both and, uh, and we'll see you next week.
Yes.
Possibly. All right, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Like a revolving door down here.
We have a, uh, budget amendment, uh, proposal. This would be Resolution 288 whereby the, uh, forfeiture revenue fund account under the District Attorney's Office is increasing by, uh, uh, $250,000. And then the interest line item under the forfeiture revenue account will also increase by $2,400. So if I'm not mistaken, Joe, neither of these were included when we did implement the budget.
Uh, it's, it's new, new funding.
And then we're earmarking it for, uh, under expenses for the DA's, uh, forfeiture expense, uh, fund account. This is, uh, Resolution 288. Uh, I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions. No? Okay, thanks, Dan. Uh, Mr. Sonata?
No.
All righty. Would one of you care to make a motion for 288?
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there are no other questions, we can ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. We also have, uh, a transfer request from the Voters' Office. This would be number 289. They're asking for a $700 transfer coming out of the Commissioner's Contingency Account into the Voters' Account for the Staples, uh, line item. Chris, any concerns?
No.
Dan, anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion then for Proposed Resolution 289? I move we support, uh, Resolution 289?
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. There are no other concerns, we can ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Proposed Resolution 290 is also with the Voters. Uh, we're asking for a transfer of $102.25 from the Commissioner's Contingency Line Item into that of Voters' Maintenance, Maintenance and Repairs. And this is for the Direct Image Bill for Quarterly Color Copies. Dan, any concerns? Okay, thank you, Chris?
No.
All righty, would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda would be a request from the Courts. Courts are asking for a $17,000 transfer coming from the Commissioner's Contingency into that of Court Subscriptions. And, uh, I believe this attachment corresponds with this proposed. Okay, so gentlemen, in your packet right behind this Proposed Resolution is a document from, uh, the Courts, uh, which lists the various expenses that have been incurred for the law library, which, which obviously we have to have, as does every other county in the Commonwealth. This is Resolution 291. Chris, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Dan?
No.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you care to make a motion for this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Uh, if there are no other questions or concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Please bear with me a minute. I should note that there was actually a second document. This goes with it as well.
There was, they just included their, their previous resolution.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Very thorough. Number, uh, this next one, which will be, uh, number 292. Thank you, Joe. Uh, this comes to us from the, uh, Veterans Affairs Office. And they are asking a total transfer of $1,130. All of it will come from the Commissioner's Contingency. $300 will be earmarked for the Veterans Land and Building Line Item. $500 will be earmarked for Veterans Lease and Rental. And $330 towards the Veterans Telephone, uh, Line Item. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sonata?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Would one of you care to make a motion for Proposed Resolution 292? I move we accept, uh, Resolution 292.
I'll second.
Thank you, both. Any other discussion? If not, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The following, uh, transfers, uh, if you don't mind, I'll walk us through them. As I go through them, if you have a question, please stop me. And then otherwise, when we get to the end, we can either take one blanket motion or if you need to, uh, divide them out, we can do that as well. So I'll start and again, if you have to interrupt me, please do. The District Attorney is asking for a transfer, uh, I voted. Joe, help me out here. It says a transfer to the General Fund in the amount of $4,512.18. Um, so is it, I guess I'm a little confused. Uh, let me, let me see here, is it? I'm trying to figure out what line item it says here, transfer to the General Fund.
To the General Fund, from one of Josh's accounts.
Okay.
Money going back to the account.
Okay. And it does say here, it's a payment for, to a municipality for the drug task force.
I believe we prepaid it.
Okay.
And one of the, one of his, his grants basically allowed for him. But he had to pay, we had to prepay.
I, I see. This is putting it back in. Understood. Under, at least I get it. I hope my two colleagues do. They probably thought long before I did. Uh, Dan or Chris, any questions on this first one? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Also from the District Attorney's Office, a, uh, uh, transfer that totals $19,372.24. And here's how it's broken out. From the Criminal Investigations Line Item, $212.24 into vehicle expense. From Travel and Training, $10,000 into the Toxicology Line Item. Also from Travel and Training, $2,160 into staff overtime. And finally, $7,000 coming from Materials and Supplies into Staff Overtime. Children and Youth Services is asking for a $2,000 transfer coming from Contracted Provider Care into Minor Equipment to cover the cost of agency car seats in order to assure child safety. District Judge Russo is asking for, looks as though, $2,000... Uh, $750, did I add that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Of that, uh, $250 is coming from their contingency into their Staples Line Item. And then the $2,500 is coming from Materials and Supplies into their Postage Line Item. And as we've noted in the past, um, we did not anticipate postage increase. It took place mid-year. And so a number of our departments have had to make transfers to accommodate that change. Mental Health and Developmental Services is asking for a $7,000 transfer from their contingency into Office Equipment. Uh, the Human Resources Office is asking for a $500 transfer from Materials and Supplies into their Staples Line Item. Incidentally, and I probably don't make note of this enough, but these documents that we're referring to here, they've already been reviewed by the Controller's Office. Each, each of these has a signature from a member of the Controller's staff noting that, and I believe you've, you've looked at them as well. Uh, the Jail is asking for a total transfer of $96,640. And it's broken out as follows. $508 is coming from the Jail's Contingency into Maintenance and Repairs. Uh, $7,532 is coming from Medical Expense into Staff Overtime. Jail would like to take $10,000. Actually, these next three are all coming from their Grocery Line Item. $10,000 is going into Staff Overtime. $39,300 is going into Materials and Supplies. And $39,300 is going into Maintenance and Repairs. Again, that totals $96,640. The Planning Office is asking for a $3,000 transfer from their contingency into their, uh, Travel and Training, uh, Line Item. The Veterans Office is requesting a $400 transfer from their Materials and Supplies Line Item into their Direct Image Line Item. And then finally, the Courts, they are requesting a $13,000 transfer from, from their Materials and Supplies into their, uh, Subscriptions. Gentlemen, these are the requested transfers. Uh, Dan, any concerns about any of them? Okay, thank you. And Chris, would, would one of you wish to make a motion then to approve all of those?
I don't.
I move we accept all of them.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. And if there are no other, uh, comments, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonata?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Under, uh, announcements, I'll note that the Board of Commissioners will reconvene, uh, one week from today. That'll be October 1st, uh, at 10 o'clock in this room. And that meeting is open to the public. It's not printed here, but I'll jump ahead a little bit and note that the courthouse will be closed on Monday, October 14th in observance of the, uh, of Columbus Day. That takes us to public comments.[1717.96]